By Kevin, second by Grant, approve the bills, all in favor, roll call vote.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Mojo.
Yes.
Commissioner Whalen.
Yes.
And then we also have minutes from April the 7th, need approval?
Move approval, second.
Got a motion by Jim, second by Kevin. Any discussion on the minutes, not roll call vote?
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Mojo.
Yes.
Commissioner Whalen.
Yes.
Okay, with that, we'll go into the boiler replacement project, or Joe's gonna handle that for us today. Let us know about the boiler.
Yes.
And the boilers for this building here?
Yes, for the courthouse, yep. So we, we, last week, we opened up those RFPs for the mechanical portion of this, so today, I'm requesting to move forward with the full project replacement of the boilers of the courthouse. What we've, what we have here is, what I've given to you in the memo here is three different categories that I went out for quotes, and then that fourth category of mechanical RFP. And I have total project cost here, and total project cost came in at $288,334.50. One thing I wanted to note in that is I added a 10% contingency, and this was a recommendation with the engineers well to make sure that if we run into any unknowns in the ceilings and stuff, I'm not really concerned about that as much, but that, that was that 10% within that total project cost, just to cover that, that would be just for any unknowns, so definitely a change order process, so it wouldn't be just, you know, they get to get by what they want or whatever, so that would come through me, and I'd run it through the building committee as well, so if it's a bigger deal, we can update the board as well if you'd like, but that's part of that total project cost, so if, if we end up not spending any contingency dollars, you're looking at a project of $258,334, which I believe is a pretty, pretty lean project if it goes that way, so we went out, the boilers themselves were fifty, we got three quotes, we, that was, we selected the highest one, which was $49,397. There's a $10,000 difference there, but the only, the reason why we went with the higher one there is a couple of different reasons. The other two boilers that we quoted required a, a 10-inch flu, piping flu going up to the third floor, that was $85, $8,500 difference there, so so in reality, they're, they're, they're about a $1,500 difference. North West Iron Fireman is our people that service our contract, the other two are out of the cities, never heard of them or anything, so feeling very comfortable going with them. Electrical quote, we went with the low quote of Rick's Electric, $10,200. Boiler controls, Johnson Controls was a low quote, $21,400. And then mechanical RFP, I know Commissioner Gross, he had questions of the differences of last, last week when we opened these up. Met with the engineer, did an interview on the company themselves, and, and they assured us that everything, that that's their price, and they meet all the requirements, so, so we're comfortable going forward with Dakota Plains as well, so. So adding all those costs up along with some of those miscellaneous asbestos, that kind of stuff, yeah, I would request to move forward with project cost not to exceed $288,334.50, and then the, the contract, contractors would be Dakota Plains, Rick Electric, Johnson Controls, and North West Iron Fireman, so. Fund 19 is where we take this out of, so we got a total of $425,975 in there, so, so we got, I, more than enough to support this, so. And I don't see any, oh.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve this contract.
I'll second it with a question.
Okay, we got a motion, and a second to approve the contract, wanting a discussion, Kevin?
Yeah, thank you. So the, the fund 19, Steve, maybe you can, just for, is, is that a capital improvement fund?
Yeah, it, Mr. Chair, it's money that we put away each year for, for different projects within the campus, so yes.
So, so does that, does that, does that build each year, or how?
Yes, we put money aside each year.
What do we put in there, is it 100,000?
Yep, we put 100,000 in there every year, and then the capital plan, or the building plan, we go over with the building committee. We have projects in there that are priced out, and so we kind of know each year to year, and I don't see, this year, we're fine, and next year, of course, if we budgeted another 100,000, we'd be more than fine, I see one project maybe in that $50,000, $60,000, but I think we've kind of, this, this boiler project was kind of going over the hump of some of the major things we need here now, so.
Well, Mr. Chair, this goes back to, I've made this comment before, and I think there, right now, there'd be no better time than now to be reviewing our five-year capital plan, and coming up with what we need to have done, there's nothing like almost free money. In terms of, in terms of rates, interest rates, and so, you know, and, and then we got out of this a little bit of free money and getting people put to work doing some things is always a good thing, so. I, I, I just encourage us to strongly, this year, in the next few months, and I think that's your committee, Jim and Frank, you know, to really, we should really get on that, so, thank you.
Yeah, I took a view, look at the boilers downstairs, and one of them isn't even operational anymore.
Yeah.
We got two down there, and there's only one of them working right now, so.
Yep.
We really need to work on this project, so.
Yes, this was on the radar, we knew this was coming.
Any further discussion? If not, we got a motion by Jim, second by Kevin, to approve this bid for $288,000. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Mojo.
Yes.
Commissioner Whalen.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, and.
Yep.
And one other thing I was gonna mention, Joe, thank you so much for really bringing up a good report on all the bids and stuff like that, good job.
Yeah, lot of, lot of numbers in there, so figured we'll throw it together there, so.
Very good job.
I was gonna tell you too, we'll start tomorrow on this project, so it, it, it's a good timing too, because the courthouse is a lot more empty than it usually is, so we're gonna try hard to get the demo part of it done within the next two weeks.
Will you turn the heat off in here?
Yep, well, we're, the temperature's perfect timing now, so we don't, we can take boilers down and do this, so. So, just letting you know that, but we'll let you know when it's finished, so.
Very good, good luck on that.
Thank you.
Kathy, you got a group coming along, or you're doing it by yourself today?
Solo.
Solo, okay, okay, we're gonna have an update on the COVID. Thanks, Kathy.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, commissioners. I just, what I handed out was just kind of our current update, so it kind of gives you the total numbers that we're seeing in Minnesota, the positive cases, that 2,470, and then the total deaths are 143. In Clay County, we have 62, although that number will change today, because we have quite a few more that I'm getting a report on, so that number will go up somewhere in the 80s, I believe, and then you see we have three deaths now in Clay County. So those, the deaths were, age ranges, two were in their 60s, and one was in the 70s as far as the age range, so. And then it lists the total number of hospitalizations, 602, and patients no longer needing to be isolated, 1,202. We also had some hospitalizations for some of our cases in Clay County as well, I believe there was five or six of those. And then the likely exposure, you know, is the congregate living across the state, and actually across the nation, is kind of an area of concern, once you get the virus circulating in there, the immunity is down in a lot of that population in congregate care, so long-term care, assisted living, so we see that kind of circulating pretty rapidly. And then community spread, of course, just like we talked about before, I believe last, we talked about the community spread, so and you know, it's circulating in our area as it is across the nation. And then the second page was kind of the demographics, just interesting, the, the gender is, is kind of a, almost an equal mix between male and female. In Clay County, you see the highest range for our cases are people in their 50s and 60s, so that's kind of where we're seeing total numbers. We have some teens, and of course, we have all the way up to 80-plus. Then on the back page of this, it shows the demographics for the source of exposure in Clay County, so some are still unknown. The congregate living percentage is 19%, and then community, either an unknown contact, whether someone was in contact with a positive case, or the known contact, so there's the 9% and 12% for the community spread, so because the virus is so, it's so contagious that it's, it's sometimes a challenge to even determine where someone may have been in positive contact with someone, or in contact with a positive case. So what public health is doing still is, we are still providing essential services to those that are isolated or quarantined. I think I talked last week about Minnesota Department of Health is doing the contact tracing, so they're following up on any of the cases that are positive, and then also following up on those that have been in contact to provide information and, and to determine how many days they need to be isolated and quarantined. They had talked about if they develop a huge surge and they can't keep up, I believe they have 72 people doing this contact tracing across the state, they would look to public health, but so far, they've been able to keep up, so we haven't been requested to take part in that contact tracing. That would be quite time-consuming, and I'm not sure with the staffing I have now, how, how we could attain that, so we'll see. I just talked with someone yesterday in epidemiology at the state, and so far, they're keeping up okay, so we don't see that in the next week or two, anyway. We also have some food baskets, I have a nurse that received some food baskets from the food pantry, so if there's a situation on a weekend or after hours, and, and someone is isolated or quarantined, we could provide a kind of an emergency food basket for them, so we'd have a couple in our office, and then we did give the sheriff's department a couple, just in case there's a, a need that somebody desperately needs food, and, and they can't buy that. We also have nurses working with our congregate care, we have two facilities in Clay County that have cases, and so I have liaison nurses that are communicating with all of the congregate care, not just the two that are listed, but all of them across Clay County to make sure that they don't need some assistance or support with our case, or with their cases, and then we can provide education. We're also working with our emergency manager to get personal protective equipment in case they need that, gowns, gloves, masks, those kinds of things, so we did run some out to a corporate care facility just yesterday. We, we have reduced number of clients in detox, because we're finding that across our metro area, there's a number of cases that are circulating through some of our homeless population, and so we wanted to, our, because of our facility, we really don't have a place to quarantine or isolate an individual that comes in, and so we're just trying to maybe reduce the number, so if there is someone that becomes ill, that they, you know, having 15 or 16, there's just no way they can social distance, and oftentimes, they won't keep masks on if we offer masks, so it's very challenging to keep not only the client safe in there, but the staff, so we talked about monitoring that on a daily basis, and I've talked with the detox director, so we, we will determine how many we can take in a given day. If they become positive, or symptomatic, so if somebody has a fever or cough, respiratory symptoms, our only option for those in our detox facility is to bring them to the emergency room, and so that's, we, we've done that a couple of times, just because we can't take them and keep them safe and keep our staff safe. So we may limit our numbers, I don't think we'll go before, below 10, I think that's kind of our threshold where we feel like we can keep them at a safe distance, hopefully, most of the time, so.
So what happens to the people above that, where do they go?
Well, we, we often, even in cases where we're at 15 or 16 and can't take anymore, we notify dispatch, and they let our law enforcement officials know, so they more than likely will end up in the emergency room, and then sent from there, they do have hotel in Fargo, so they're able to take some of those individuals if they need a safe location to be, and they can isolate them, then they can keep them separated. We have also a facility in Clay County, I think I talked about this last week, and we have received funding, so we have a little over 100,000 in funding that we can pay for lodging for those that we need to isolate or quarantine, and then some supplies, so we have the facility, we have the security company, the only thing we don't have is a transport person, we've, we've searched high and low for someone to do transports, so from our shelter to this facility, or to get testing and back to the facility, so we're still in need of someone to transport. We so far have not used that, we haven't had anybody that needed to go into that facility yet, but we have some funding now that we can pay for that, that grant fund, so that's, that's a good thing.
Then we need one of those driverless cars.
Yeah.
So is that funding, do you apply for it as you need it, or did they already send you the money, or?
They already sent us the money.
And so what happens if you don't use it?
That's a good question, I, I haven't checked back with them if we don't use that, if we have to send it back, we'll, we'll see. We are able to buy, we did not have thermometers for those individuals that were in that facility, and so we were able to just, and thermometers are a, it's, it's a premium to get a thermometer now, so we will use that funding to get thermometers, we did find a, a source that we can find those, and we ordered those for those that may be in that facility, they'll need to check their temperature every day, so. So we're able to use that funding for some supplies like that, so. Any questions? I know I went through a, through the information pretty fast, but kind of, we're, we're still working on the same process and working with the same, it's, it's a, you know, it keeps, we see the numbers continue to increase, and, and hopefully, we'll peak at some point here in the next month, but.
Kathy, I have a question.
Yes.
So when Governor Wolf and Governor Burgum give their updates, and they talk about the cases in hospital or ICU, are border city residents counted on the North Dakota side or the Minnesota side, is it based where their residence is? It's a little confusing for me.
Well, our, all of our testing with all of the, the clients we have in Clay County, they're being tested on the North Dakota side, so it's either through Essentia or Sanford, so that's the majority of the, of the testing, those results, or the tests, actually, if they're through Sanford, sometimes they're sent to Sioux Falls, or they may be sent to Mayo, we're getting those test results back within two to three days, except for the, the high-risk people, and those are healthcare workers, hospitalized patients, and those in congregate living. So other than that, we're getting, we're getting a pretty good turnaround rate, so those numbers that Sanford and Essentia, they're, they're covering our region, so we are being covered through, through those healthcare facilities, does, is that what you were asking?
Do you want to sit over there to go to Clay County or Cass County, account, don't you, Jenny?
Well, I, I understand that if there's a positive person in Clay County, they're still being covered by the Sanford network, I get that, or Essentia network. My question is more in terms of the numbers of ICU patients that we're hearing the governor's update on, if there's a Clay County resident in a Cass County ICU, is that counted in North Dakota ICU or the Clay County ICU?
Yeah, that is, that is counted, actually, when they have the number of ICU patients in Sanford and Essentia, those are the number of ICU covering both Clay County and Cass County.
Okay, so then what I'm, I guess what my question more is, when Governor Wolf gives the update on where Minnesota residents are in ICU, you're saying they wouldn't be covered in that number?
Correct, yes, he's, he's covering the Minnesota healthcare system, so that is correct, they would not be covered in there.
Okay.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Thank you, Mr., I wanna, I wanna go back to a question that Commissioner Mojo asked you about last week, and this has to do with, you know, she was asking about being able to identify maybe by communities, I'm gonna go a little bit beyond that here in a second, but and I, and I, you know, your response is that's all handled by the state. I, it, I, it seems to me kind of interesting that when we watch the news, we can hear about certain businesses, there was a big one in a, in a deal in Grand Forks, and there was a big deal with one in, in Sioux Falls, South Dakota, and why, why are some of them being identified and some are not, and it's, and, and I want to add, tell you why I ask that question. You know, our, our public, our, our businesses, right now, a lot of them are open to do things, and rightfully so, because we need to have groceries and those types of things, but, but it seems to me that, that in some areas where, where we know there's an outbreak, wouldn't it be in the public's best interest to know that? And, and again, so, so a follow-up, so you, you had mentioned today, you know, and this started off with, you know, about the congregate care places. You said there's two in Clay County, I happen to know, and I, you know, I had a media person reach out to me yesterday asking some questions, and I said that we're somewhat limited in, in what we can give out, but there's, you know, one of these facilities, from what I've been told, is doing it on their own, they're updating on their website about, you know, if there are cases and what they're doing. Bravo to them for doing that, in regards to congregate care, are, what, are families all well-informed about what's going on in those places, because I know they have, some of them have complete lockdowns, I know I am kind of all over the board here, but I places, because I know they have, some of them have complete lockdowns, I know I am kind of all over the board here, but I, what I'm getting at is, is you know, it seems to me that I, as an individual, if I know there's a, if there's a particular place that has a higher likelihood of asymptomatic even, for that matter, because we don't know where they are, right? We don't know where they are.
Right.
But chances are, it's, if, if you've had cases from a particular place, the asymptomatic people have, are probably also around there. And I, you know, and I hear numbers of 30 to 40% of the people who have this are asymptomatic, which means there's no symptoms, but yet they're walking around and, and they can carry the contagious virus.
Correct, yes.
So, so the more we learn about this, and the more we know where these things are, when we start talking about opening back up, which at, at some point in time, we're gonna have to do, how do we, how do we keep people informed? If, if everything is this big secret?
Good, good questions, yeah, and in Minnesota, and, and some of the states are, are different in regards to their privacy and HIPAA requirements, although HIPAA's federal, but there's some variation.
Keep in mind, Kathy, I just want, don't, I don't mean, but, but never once have I suggested that we, we, we give any names out.
Sure.
And that's what HIPAA's about.
Yep, right, yep, names and cases, so in fact, I just verified this, so I know that Commissioner Mojo asked last week about letting some of the smaller communities know, and the reason why the Minnesota Department of Health is saying no to that is just, there's, they don't want the, the individuals targeted, for lack of a better word, so sometimes in smaller communities, you can determine who may be positive, now you made a good point about asymptomatic individuals, there are a lot of asymptomatic individuals out there. We don't know who they are because they don't have symptoms right now, and you can carry the virus at least two days before you develop symptoms, so that could be any one of us, that could be asymptomatic, and, and we can spread it, because we don't feel ill, we don't have a fever, we have no respiratory symptoms, and we can still spread it to others, because we don't know how large of a group that is, it's all over the place, so the best recommendation is that you act as if everybody could be infected, that's why they do the six-foot distancing. Six-foot distancing is the only, you know, vaccine we have right now, there's no vaccine for this virus, so six-foot distancing is our only measure, non-pharmaceutical measure that we have to avoid spreading it to others, and of course, I talked about the cloth masks, because the, the N95s and the surgical masks are really, and, and there's a lot of need for those in the healthcare world, so we don't want to use up those masks, but the cloth masks will protect, if I'm asymptomatic and I'm wearing a cloth mask, I can protect any individual I may be meeting in the grocery store or anyplace else, I can protect them from getting a virus from me, I'm asymptomatic, I don't even know I have it, so the cloth mask can catch anything that you may sneeze, cough, even sometimes talking and spitting, but, so the, the virus is all around, they want to protect the individuals, for instance, Minnesota Department of Health, through the Commissioner of Health, will determine who may have greater information, I verified with, with the Minnesota Department of Health just two days ago, or yesterday, I guess it's only Tuesday, whether we can give any further information, and the only public information we can provide is the numbers, we can provide the age ranges, we can provide the gender, we cannot provide a location, that will be given to some of the first responders through the Commissioner of Health, the governor has an executive order out there that there's some first responders that will get the addresses, and, and there's a process for all of that. We'll get information in case they have to respond to some situation, and then they'll know if that's a positive case, so there's gonna be a, a way to do that through the Department of Public Safety, so that, I'm, I'm limited as to even getting, I can tell you, the majority of cases are in our metro area, but I can't give specific smaller community, I, I can't say how many may be in Dilworth or Glendon, any of the smaller communities, they're not allowing us to do that, because, again, they want to protect that healthcare, the people that are positive and are dealing with this, and they want to protect individuals from having that information out there, it's an infectious disease, so our best bet is operate as if anyone could be infectious, anyone could be carrying the virus, so it wouldn't really matter if you have a cluster in a small community, if you're operating with that six-foot distancing and that everyone may carry it.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I, I, I'm a little frustrated here on this, because we, we're all, we're all stuck at home, our majority, a lot of us are stuck at home, and we watch the news, and we, and we'll see that individual mayors of cities know all their details, it's perfectly clear, you know, you, or the, you know, the governor or the mayor of New York, you see him on, he knows everything, and I guess, I'm from the standpoint that And I guess, I, I'm from the standpoint that, you know, at, at least something, some sort of an update maybe to the mayors of our cities is appropriate, so that they, you know, I, it, you know, it seems to me that when we talk about cleaning, you know, how do, how do we know where things need to be cleaned up? Is it, is, is the public health notifying just the individuality that, about the need for cleaning and that type of thing?
Right.
And why is it that some mayors in this country get to be informed and others don't?
And, and that's a good question. I'm not sure why the other states are, are doing that. We can't inform anyone. We have pretty stringent parameters in Minnesota. And, and so, all I can release is what they've allowed me to release. So, I'm, I'm bound by those, those requirements because we're.
I'm not, I'm not blaming you, Kathy.
No, I understand.
Don't get me wrong. I just find it frustrating, and, and, and the more limited information that's out there leaves a lot more to speculation and guessing. And, and I, it's, it's frustrating to me that, that, that we're dealing with that. So, I have one more thing that I want to talk to you about.
Sure.
And thank you for your answers, and I, I, I get that that's a higher level, but, and it, and it, and it gets to be there's going to be two things that are going to be critical moving forward when we open back up. And we hear it, and I, and I agree with it. It's testing and contact tracing. And, and how are we going to be in Clay County? I, you know, I'm concerned about what we do in Clay County.
Right.
And I think we should be planning for some sort of a plan to do contact tracing on our own within Clay County. And I know that puts a burden on you, but start looking at that. And, and I think you should be ready to come to us and say, what is it going to take? Because ultimately, I think, if we're going to open back up, one of the things we're going to have to be able to do is if there's a breakout, find it right away and go to those who've been potentially in harm's way. Instead of making everybody stay home again, right? That's the purpose of that.
Right.
So, how are we going to be ready for that? I don't see how in the world, Public Health Department in, in St. Paul or wherever the heck they are, is going to be able to do it for the entire state. If this virus is contagious, is contagious as we say that it is, so.
Yes, and, and thank you for that, too. We, we actually are in conversations about that. We, we are not so naive to think, they say we don't need public health's, local public health. We don't need them to provide the contact tracing right now. But we are very confident that that may happen in the future. So, we are definitely in conversations about who can provide that, how, how we can recruit individuals to make that happen. We've looked at, you know, even students in the campuses that may be.
And what is, I mean, I would imagine that's been, it's obviously been done in the past, and there's a method to that or a process.
Right.
And if we're going to have some college students coming in and doing it, you know, what's the training time and all that?
Yes, and there is training. We do contact tracing, just so you know. We, we in public health do it all the time if we have tuberculosis cases. And we have to do all the contact tracing of those that were exposed. So, it'd be very similar to what they're doing now. So, in public health, they're pretty familiar with that. But you're right, there'd be training required to get anyone up to speed for contact tracing. So, we would consider that as well to get ramped up if we needed to do some training. I know in Cass County, it's a little different because their state health department is so small that they require the public health agencies to help with that. So, in Fargo-Cass Public Health, they are doing contact tracing, and I believe they've used students as well that they've trained up. So, we would, we would look for that opportunity if we could find students that would be willing to assist.
And, and so, and the, and the testing piece now, for, so, some of these questions, I have people asking me, too, so it's not like it's just all my little.
Nope, absolutely.
What's going on in my head. But, but the, so the testing, is there going to, is there going to become a time where, where some Clay County? For example, if there is a, if there is a, a place where there's been known to be infections or, or positive cases, I guess is the way to, they say it now, within a facility, wouldn't, wouldn't everybody else who works within that facility, wouldn't they be prime targets to want to test?
Yes.
Okay. So, so at what point, so right now, that's not happening.
Not in most cases.
Yeah, that's, and that's unfortunate. So, at what point, for example, if we have a, a retail establishment here in Moorhead, or a retail establishment in Holly, and they, they determine that they've got, come up with a positive test or whatever, there might be a, a coworker who is very concerned about that because sitting at home, they might have a child with severe asthma. And, and so, they want to get tested themselves. Right now, they, they're turned away.
You know, as they get more tests, they, they won't be, but they're, they're doing the high, high-risk areas right now. And I know if there's, like, say, a number of cases in a long-term care facility, they will test those individuals that are in there, both residents and staff. In a retail establishment, I'm not sure how they'll work that out, depending on how many test kits they have at the time. So, they're continually getting more test kits and more availability for, it'd be nice if everybody could get tested right now as they, you know, as they want to because they have been exposed to a positive. They just are not doing every single individual. And part of that is we, you know, there is nothing, most of the people that we have in Clay County are recovering at home. So, there really isn't anything other than making sure that they're hydrated. There's no medication for most of the individuals that, that are at home. They just need to be isolated and make sure they're not in contact with others. So, as far as treatment protocols, there's, there's really nothing until we get the vaccine and maybe some antivirals. There are clinical trials going on with some of the medication, and those are really for the most ill patients. Those are in hospitalization or ICU. So, those trials are going on to see if that would lessen the severity. But they're not widespread yet for general use. But you're right, the more test kits we can receive, the more people can get tested.
Will we ever, will we ever do any of that right out of our own public health facility?
It doesn't sound like it because the healthcare facilities, they are providing that. Even the facility in, in Worthington that had the outbreak, Sanford provided all that testing. They went to the facility and provided the testing, so.
I apologize for the questions, but I, you know, I, I'm asking, I'm asking them on behalf of some other people, too.
Absolutely, no.
And that last scenario I gave you was a reality about a person who is, is working in a facility that happens to not be in Clay County but close by.
Oh, sure.
And, and they, they've been told that if, if their individual with asthma gets this, it's, won't be good.
Yeah.
And then they, there's no testing for it.
And, and that's tough. Those are tough situations because that is a reality, and you want to protect your, your family. So, yeah, that's a hard one. The only thing they could do is wear the mask and hopefully not spread it, you know, even in your own home, wear a cloth mask. But those are, those are tough choices when there's not enough testing for everyone. I agree.
Well, thank you, Kathy.
Yeah, thank you for the questions.
Thank you for your, what you're doing. That's good, thank you.
No, thank you for the questions and for the updates there.
Thank you.
You got more stuff on that, or?
I, I think not. I think on tomorrow, we're going to have a, a press conference as we do on Wednesdays, but it'll be virtual. So, I believe Tim from IT is going to test that this afternoon and make sure, I believe we're going to be doing it in the IT conference room. So, we'll be providing information, but it'll be virtual this time, so.
Commissioner Haney, do you go to that still, or?
I did it by telephone last week.
Okay, and you give a report for Clay County?
Yes.
Yep.
Most of it was about the motor vehicle.
Oh.
It's kind of an update for all the things related to COVID-19.
And Mayor Judd is also part of that, so he provides updates, and then Fargo and West Fargo. So, so this, this time now, they've decided to do it virtual, so.
Okay, any further questions? Thank you, Kathy.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you, Kathy.
Stay healthy.
Yeah, thanks, you too.
Okay, we have, we go into the highway department. We've got four different things we're going to cover there. The first one's going to be to advertise for County-Stated Highway Eight project, which is north of Comstock, somewhere along that area.
It's on the Rustland Road.
On the Rustland Road.
Right, we, that's the one that's really been falling apart these last few years, especially in the fall. We have a lot of heavy trigger bee traffic, and there's a lot, there's actually gravel that runs across here. And our forces have been trying to keep the road in place. There's big boulders, eight, ten inches or so that'll come out of that thing as it's falling apart. And I think it's a good idea to get that one on our list. Our, our staff designed a full-depth reclamation, so we'll grind up what's existing out there. We'll add, is it six inches of new asphalt on top of it, as well as we'll replace all the culverts, the centerline culverts underneath there, so.
Is that the four and a half miles of?
Yes, yep. We have, you know, I, I know that there's a lot of different counties doing this sort of thing, so I reached out to the county engineers in District Four, and I think there's half a dozen or more projects that just liked us. So, it's very popular, or, you know, it was nice to see their, and they've actually got a lot of their projects bid. So, we were able to take a look at their numbers, kind of helped us put our, our abstract together on this. And our staff put the plan together and run it through MINDOT and got approval. And we'd like to go to bid letting on May 26 on this.
Any further questions on that?
Oh, this is part of our five-year plan, too.
Yes, yes, it is.
So, we need to move approval for each one of them individually?
Yes.
Okay. And this, this is, this is the one that we switched, right, with?
Right, yeah, we.
Yeah, we, we moved one up a year and the other flip flopped them. Yeah, okay. Mr. Chair, I would move approval of the agenda to me.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve. Advertise for bits for County-Stated Highway Number Eight, second. And we got a second from Jim, oh, for any further discussion? Steve will take that vote.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Mozo?
Yes.
Commissioner Whalen?
Yes.
Okay, motion is approved. With that, we'll move into, we've got three culvert replacements. When advertised, have we advertised for those already?
No, that's the one that we initially came to the board with the MOU. This is a project we're kind of partnering with Watershed on, so.
Oh, this is the watershed one, excuse me.
Right, yep. Yeah, like I said, we got a lot of culverts. We've never done this many box culverts in one year, but the funding's never backed up like it has either. So, as soon as the funding came, our projects were all done and on the shelf. This was a little bit of a new project that came to us from the watershed. The two of the, actually, I think all three of them are actually round pipe. They're not actually bridges, but they do qualify for bridge dollars based on the size of the new structures. We've got one on our County Road Seven. That'll be split fifty-fifty between the watershed and the highway department. And then the other two are on township systems. And that one will be split mostly with town bridge funds, and then the watershed picking up the engineering on them. So, it worked out really good. Plans come together nice. I know Justin was working with Houston Engineering on the plans, and they, they turned out really nice. And rolling forward on a May 26 letting on that one as well.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think if any, a year to see how ditch systems work. Ditch Eleven was, I think, is maybe can confirm that's the last ditch to open up. And I think there's been some, some problems in terms of joining that. And so, I think replacing these box culverts will really help with that.
Okay.
They're kind of falling apart, but they're also hydraulically deficient as well, so that should help open them up a little bit.
Okay. Any further?
I'll move approve, to approve Agenda Item B.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Grant, second by Kevin, to advertise for three culvert replacements. Any further discussion? Not, Steve, go ahead.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Commissioner Haney?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Mozo?
Yes.
Commissioner Whalen?
Yes.
Okay, motion is approved. With that, we'll move into discussion we had on equipment replacement in the highway department.
Does everybody have a copy of the, okay? We have met with our Highway Tracking Committee a couple of different times on this. And this is our, probably our final equipment request for the year. It's replacement of two mowing tractors. The existing two we've had are getting to a point where they're starting to incur maintenance costs, and we'd like to replace those with our internal service dollars. We've got two wheel loaders that we'd like to replace as well. There again, one of them's got flashing some codes, and it's time to replace those. There again, we've got internal service dollars that kind of, the excess in the wheel loaders will balance out a little shortage for the two mowing tractors. And we've also got a, on the, the last thing on list is to purchase a Skidster. We've got an existing Skidster that's got, it's got the wheels on there, which is good for our asphalt paving needs. The request on the, on the agenda today is for a, a track machine. It's one that we can get down in the ditches, and I know our guys are just chomping to get that even as of now because we do have some culverts to replace. And, yeah, the track machines can stand, you know, they can go down into the mud a lot better, and we definitely have a need for this machine. Like I said, on the, on the list that I put together, the spreadsheet, everything in yellow is the items. I guess we'd like to, where we'd like to go, the two John Deere tractors are from RDO Equipment Company. And as you can see on the very far right, they are a little bit short of dollars. And that has to do with when they went into the program, they went in there with the trade numbers taken out, as well as the cost of these tractors have dang near doubled in the last eight years. And we try to keep these things eight years, so that was kind of the big shortage there. Luckily, the two wheel loaders, those are the next two now, one thirty-six and one thirty-eight. There's an in excess of about ninety-five thousand and one and seventy-six in the other that does balance out, so the, the numbers do work there. And then on the last one, the, the Skidster there, we've got sixty-five thousand dollars, sixty-six thousand, six thirty-one in the balance. So, we should, all in all, it's about a fifteen thousand dollars of excess dollars that will remain in the Internal Service Fund.
Does any of this stuff have to go on bids or anything like that, or is it just go by?
So, this is all out of the cooperative purchasing bid. So, I believe there, it's all out of the Sourcewell. That's kind of the, that's the contract we've been using. Sourcewell used to be NJPA, and it's a cooperative purchasing bid, and it's, it's nationwide. And the neat thing about it is it's actually based out of Staples, Minnesota. You know, it's really, it's a really neat program. So, what they, all these companies need to do is they provide a other, you know, they meet a pretty stringent amount of, you know, rules and different things that they do. It's real similar to the Minnesota State bid, but it's a little different. They don't put dollar amounts for every little item on the equipment. They put more of a range, and I think it's, so there's a, there's a list price for the equipment, and then each dealer then says what percent of a discount they'll give. So, it's actually a lot more simple for the dealers. They give twenty percent or twenty-five percent discount right off the top of the list, and then there's a little flexibility for them. And like I said, I don't completely understand how that flexibility works, but I know it's a lot easier. And we've been almost buying everything the last year or two off of Sourcewell. It's really gaining popularity, and like I said, the dealers seem to like it a lot better. And in fact, the matter is, we're getting a little better buys on it, too, versus when we bought equipment off the Minnesota State bid.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have a question for Dave. I, I noticed that there's not a trade-in value on the Skidster. Can you tell me, are we just buying, buying a Skidster where we haven't had one previously, or what's the difference there?
So, for about the last ten years or so, my guys have been requesting to have a wheeled one and a tracked one, but we've never been able to make it work with the numbers. And this is the first year that we do have dollars where we didn't, we didn't need the trade on the existing machine to make the dollars work. And like I said, they really want one of each so that they, you know, in the summertime when we're paving, we need the tractor, a wheeled machine. The asphalt is hot and you're on top of the road. But when we're down fixing culverts, they got to have a track machine, otherwise we got to go rent one. So, that is the request. I'd like to keep the existing machine, the, the existing Skidster, and purchase a new one. So, the existing wheeled machine will have no internal service dollars in there, but then the track machine will gain dollars every year. And then, I guess my thought was, when we're getting ready to replace the wheeled machine, we'll use the dollars on the other one. It should work just like it does with our plow trucks, because now we keep a, we keep a tandem axle truck for eight years, and we take the dollar amounts out and buy a new one and keep that one with no dollars. And then that, that used to go to like the part-time district. So, the dollars should work out. We'll have one with money in it and one without. And, and then we will have a trade then in, in five to seven years.
Do you think you'll get longer use out of it since you have the wheeled machine, too?
That's, that is another good question. I, I believe we should because you'd be splitting up the amount of hours on the machine, so they should last longer as well. That's something that we could probably talk at Highway Tracking Committee a little bit, and it would be a little, it'd be a little less money is going into the Internal Service Fund, so it should. So it should, it should help that, should benefit the dollars there.
Well, Mr. Chair, I, I think Commissioner Mojo raised a really good point. I, I think we, I think we need to talk with Lori about that. And as, as we're set up for the annual amount per item that goes into the Internal Service Fund, we typically will go eight years. But if we're only using these things, we're splitting the duties of them.
Right.
We should be able to talk about maybe doubling the years of service. Now, the only problem with that is, is I don't know if warranty is based on the amount of miles put on or if it's on how old it is. So we do have to keep that in mind too, because sometimes buying new or, or trading in is, is because of the significant repairs that go into it otherwise. So that, but that's something we don't, I, I just wanted to acknowledge that she was, made a really good point there. I, I do want to say that Dave first brought this to our Highway Committee, I think it was in early March maybe. And at that point in time, we, we did tell them we were concerned about with all of what we got going on right now that, and we had him hold off and he came back in, in April. And we did decide that it's probably appropriate to move forward this. And we, we did it, we did it contingent on the, on Lori reviewing it and making sure that the Internal Service Fund can handle it. And I guess I haven't heard if you've had that conversation with Lori.
We, we did talk and we went through the spreadsheet on the phone the day after we had our last Highway Tracking Committee meeting. And there was another, one little part, I guess the reason I, it brought me to come back in April was the warranties, I think on the, the two wheel loaders, the, the cost for the warranties on them were going to see an increase, I think by the end of the month. So we did see an increase. When we started putting these numbers together in December, the wheel loader costs went up by twenty thousand dollars. So if I would, you know, if we could have got our ducks in a row, you know, we were plowing snow and things were, you know, we thought we had a little more time. But the cost of the wheel loaders did go up about twenty thousand from December. We put this together, we brought it in in March. And then we started hearing that the cost of the warranties was going to go up towards the end of April. So I thought, well, based on the pandemic and things, I thought I'd take another shot at it and see what the Highway Committee's wishes were. And I guess here we are.
So was that a yes to Lori's stamp?
Correct, yep, yep.
And I, and I appreciate that. I guess my question is, you know, I understand that, that we've got something in, in place or we treat it off in, you know, however many years. But the reality is, you can't afford to buy a new vehicle, you don't buy a new vehicle. And so I think right now the numbers make sense, but I appreciate Commissioner Campbell bringing that up. You know, I, we just have to be cautious with public funds right now.
That's right.
Correct.
Okay, we got a request here for some two thousand twenty equipment. We got for two tractors, two mowers, no, two mowers.
Two tractors, two wheel loaders and a Skidster.
Yeah, two tractors, two mowers, that is, yeah.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve regular Agenda Item B, number C, with the lower recommended equipment.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve the purchasing of these equipment.
Second.
And we got a second, motion by Jenny, second by Grant. Any further discussion? Steve?
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Mojo.
Yes.
Commissioner Whalen.
Yes.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to the fourth request, approve the right, right-of-way acquisition along County State Eight Highway Number One.
Yeah, we finally got our appraisal back. Our staff have been working with a company out of Detroit Lakes, who's been doing all our county appraisals for about the last five to seven years. We've been anxiously awaiting as we've had the plans done for quite a while now. And our staff needs to go out now and meet with probably twenty or so different landowners out there. I think the numbers came back pretty much where I kind of expected them to see. We've got several different types of land out there along this two-mile stretch. You know, there's farmland.
Before we go any further, just for the people that know work, County State Eight Highway Number One is?
Sure, County Road is, it's North Broadway Street. It starts at Wall Street on the south end and it goes north two miles up to County Road Twenty-Six. It's the first north-south road on the east side of the Red River.
Thank you.
But the work is going from, not all the way up.
Right, correct, yeah. It starts at County Road Twenty or Seventieth Avenue North. Yep, and it runs up to Twenty-Six. There's, there's farmland up along this stretch of road. There's several homesites, as well as we also usually acquire a little strip of temporary easement where we can pile topsoil on the very backside of the ditches when you're building the roadway. So most of the practices, you acquire a temporary easement just during construction. Like I said, the appraisal came back kind of where I, I figured it would be. We do have right-of-way dollars in our budget for this. Croppable land or tillable farmland came back at five thousand dollars per acre. The residential property came back at twenty thousand dollars per acre. The temporary easements are two fifty per acre. And then he's also got, there's several trees along there. And I think he puts a valuation for them in the book there. Like I said, he's, he's got a pretty nice book, everything put together. And as soon as, if we do get approval here, our staff would move out and start getting right-of-way as soon as we can. We'd like to get this project advertised and bid as quick as we can. We sure like to stay on schedule of two thousand twenty if we can.
Well, that, that also is, is part of our five-year plan. And Mr. Chair, I would, I would move approval of the, moving forward with the right-of-way acquisitions.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve for County State Eight Highway Number One.
Oh, thank you.
And we got a second by, excuse me, motion by Kevin, second by Jenny. Any further discussion? Steve?
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Mojo.
Yes.
Commissioner Whalen.
Yes.
Okay, motion gets approved. Got any further?
I do not.
All the roads in good shape out there?
You know, our guys are doing a lot of hauling right now and we're pulling some shoulders. County Road Eleven, south of the Morehead Airport, has that drop-off. So our guys went out and they, they pulled material back on that. So if you do jump off the, the narrow, the road's kind of narrow in that area. So they're out there doing that. We did fix the culvert on County Road One-Fifteen. And I believe we're still waiting to fix the one up on County Road Forty-two north of Yulin. That was another one, big one where the pipe lifted way up. Other than that, the guys are just getting out on the roads. And, you know, if we can get the gravel and the shoulders and things back in order, we'll start patching and crack filling. And I know the guys are busy. They got everything, the backyard is full of equipment and things are starting to buzz, so.
Got a call from resident up there that normally had some concerns about the Road Twenty-Seven. And she said the road's never been better than it has been this year, so.
Great.
She wants to keep that greeter operator there, so.
Good to hear. We are taking bids, I guess in about nine days for our yearly supplies. And we'll be bringing those forward as well. But we put as much money as we absolutely could into more gravel. I think we've been a little short on gravel in the last several years. So we're putting more of our maintenance dollars into new gravel. So, you know, like last fall when it was so wet and we got all the different calls on, on our gravel roads. So we're trying to put some money into our gravel roads and I think that'll make a big improvement.
Okay, thank you for the report.
So, oh, okay, that, no, I, I wait for my committee report, that's fine.
All right.
I don't, that's fine.
Very good. Thank you, Dave and Justin. With that, we'll go on to committee reports. We're going to, did he start out with Grant?
Okay, let's see, I had Economic Development Corporation Executive Committee meeting last week and over the phone. And of course, we were discussing, you know, what the impacts of all this are going to be on the EDC. And they're trying to make sure that they have funds to continue and operate. So, but so far, everything's going, going fine. And let's see, what else did I have? I had an AMC Public Safety meeting last week. And that, that was actually pretty interesting. And we had presentations or information from the Commissioner of Public Safety and the Commissioner of Corrections and other people involved in this pandemic around the state. And, and a lot of, a lot of information and a lot going on. But they seem to be staying on top of everything at this point, so. And yesterday, we had the diversion, or not, I guess, yeah, I had a diversion meeting too last Friday. And we had an update on the public-private partnership. It was kind of a sleeper, but it was a lot of information that we needed to have. And so it was, it was a good thing to do. And then we had a construction meeting yesterday on the Juvenile Detention Center. And of course, we're, everything's good there. We're wrapping things up. I think we're still going to have another meeting or two, just to make sure everything is done and done the way it should be. So that was it for me.
Jenny, you got any?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, I had a meeting for the Cass Klay Food Partners, working to address concerns that we're hearing from the public there and letting them know what's, what's available and what's out there. We had a, the policy group from Metromac had a meeting, a pretty, pretty standard thing was going on. I guess it was completely virtual, it was a new thing. I also had the Environment and Natural Resources Policy webinar last Friday. DNR update from Commissioner James Roman. We had an update from the MPCA Assistant Commissioners. And a Bowser update from Executive Director John Jashke. Yeah, I appreciate having a meeting like this kind of in between when you normally meet. It's nice to hear what's going on. Just had a few random emails in regards to Wild Library and what's going on there. And yesterday had a meeting with Commissioner Gross and Steve and our funding zoning department in regards to one of the issues upon for the meeting tonight. The other question I had, I know that the Buffalo Red River Watershed Director Bruce will be retiring soon. And, and, you know, historically, I'm not sure what sort of input the county board has had in terms of replacement of those directors. And I know that they're probably looking at that. So just wanted to bring to this board for maybe discussion if we want to send a letter to the watershed in terms of, of weighing in the input on how that replacement goes or if we want to just have a conversation with them. I'm not sure.
Well, she's looking for comments. I, I certainly think we should have some sort of involvement with, with that process of, of how they're going to go about replacing. I, I think that, I think that's a critical job hire. And I, I think the public entities who fund it should be very much involved with the hiring of its director.
Well, wouldn't the counties that are involved in the Buffalo Watershed do the hiring? I mean, wouldn't the counties that are involved with the Buffalo Watershed do the hiring?
Well, I think, I think the way it's designed, and Commissioner Mojo can correct me if I'm wrong. But, but I, I think tho, those are done by the watershed board members themselves. That's part of their, you know, so we appoint the watershed board members, but they're the ones who, for example, right now, Bruce Albright's contract and those of other staff members, they're, they actually contract out with, with the engineering agency to provide those services. And it's, it's that entity, the Buffalo Red Board, that's, that, as a matter of fact, they, I think in, at their annual meeting in January, they just renewed the contract with that firm for the next two years. And again, Commissioner Mojo can correct me if I'm wrong. But, but, so that's, that's how that process works. And I, and I think what Commissioner Mojo was saying, and I agree one hundred percent, even though it's in the Buffalo Red Board's, the Buffalo River Watershed District's authority to do that, I think it's very important that we as Clay County have an input into a final, into that final decision.
And that's kind of my, my question is, from what I've observed, I think it, it just falls onto the board of managers. And while I think their input is very vital, because they work really closely with whoever that individual would be, both the Buffalo Red and Wild Rice Watershed Districts have advisory boards. And, and, you know, I, I sit on that for the Buffalo Red and have not seen that, that they will be included in that conversation at all. And I, I really do think that the counties should have some sort of voice in terms of how that process plays out or who they replace with. And so I, you know, I don't know if, if it would be appropriate for us to send a letter in regards to that. I'm not sure.
I, I certainly think we should.
Okay.
So do you need my, I mean, do you need me to make, make a request of Steve then to send a letter from this board? Or to just have a conversation with Chair Leach? Or I know they're, they're meeting differently because of COVID, so that is also a challenge. But, you know, Bruce's last, last day technically full-time is on the first.
All right, Mr. Chair, I, I think, I would like to see us send a letter to the Buffalo Red Board, you know, with the idea, and I, and I, I'm very comfortable with having Commissioner Mojo be the point person on behalf of our board to have some involvement. I, I don't know, I'll leave it up to, I think we can leave it up to Steve to, I think he can address the message we're trying to send while in a letter. And, you know, so I would move that we go forward with a letter to the Buffalo Red Board.
I'll second that, thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to send a letter requesting to be part of the hiring of the watershed. Any further discussion? Steve?
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Mojo.
Yes.
Okay. You have any further to report, Jenny?
No, thank you.
Okay. Let's see. Kevin?
Okay, last Tuesday after our board meeting, we did have our Highway Tracking Committee meeting. Most of the items we've addressed through action today. We, we do have, we did have the first look at the new five-year plan. We're a little bit behind on that right now in term, and I think it's all because of this COVID issue. But, so we got a draft of it and it appears to be good. And I know that most of, most of this, because most of it's dealing with outside of the metro area here in Morehead, I, I did suggest that Commissioner Mojo, that you see this five-year plan. A lot of it's, has to do with areas that's within yours and Frank's district and-
Yeah, thank you, I saw Dave and said that.
Yeah, so I, so I, I think we're kind of waiting to maybe get feedback from you, if you have any, before we, because we're, pretty soon, we're going to be scheduling the, if we haven't already, we're going to be scheduling the pu, a public, part of what we have to do is we have to have a public input meeting. And, but before we did that, we wanted to make sure that, and I don't know if Commissioner Haney or Commissioner Whalen have any concerns, but the vast majority of these are kind of in our rural areas. But before we, before we move forward with the public information, I wanted our board to at least get a chance to review it. And if they have any suggestions or concerns, that we should hear about them beforehand, so.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, so, so that, and then, I guess that's enough on the Highway Tracking. Then we, yesterday, we had, in the morning, I had a, a diversion executive committee meeting. One of the interesting items that's up on there is we're starting to get some information regarding a farmstead relocation plan. And this is how you go about, the process you go about helping them, you know, we have to, these are lands we have to acquire and how you- to, these are lands we have to acquire and how you move them. And right now, there, there's a total of sixteen farmsteads involved that would be involved with this. Fifteen of them are in North Dakota and one in Minnesota. We have, in addition to that, we have nine known rural commercial properties. And they, they also have some special relocation opportunities for them. There are seven of those in North Dakota and two that we know of in Minnesota. Commercial gets to be different. There's somebody who might consider them commercial that maybe we don't, doesn't meet our definition of commercial. So we say that's, that's why we say we have nine as we know it right now. And of those nine, three of them are utilities of which we will be mitigated and, and there will be MOUs with those to handle whatever is needed there. So that, we just got our first review of that document and I think it's gonna, you know, we're gonna be hearing more about that from our lands committee meeting on Wednesday along with some more information for the diversion authority on Thursday. And I did want to say that I did, I was also part of that diversion authority special meeting last Friday regarding the educational piece on the P-three project. And it was a lot of information, but it's like trying to read a book with a lot of information in it that's, I'll leave it at that. Then yesterday afternoon, we had our construction meeting. Items to note, the certificate of occupancy had been, was signed on April tenth and it was turned over on April thirteenth. So those who follow this, you know, over the, while this was going on, we had capacity issues and we were using, for our North Dakota people, we were also using the, a building that Cass County was letting us use free of rent and everything. So that, that is no longer needed. That's been turned back over to Cass County. So that's, that's good news. We, we're probably gonna have one more meeting and it's gonna probably get down to the final numbers. I know I've, I'd been giving reports regarding where we're at, how much over we were in contingent, contingencies. And we kind of thought with the worst-case scenario, so we'll have a report, you know, after May, is it May fourth, I think, is Monday we're gonna have that meeting. But I think, you know, we had, we had looked at a worst-case scenario and I think we've fallen below that, so things are good. We did receive a report on the water issue regarding the jail tunnel. There's some problems there and the solution they're looking at is having to put about three different sump pump holes in there, if I, pumps in there, Steve, if I'm mistaken. And which I suppose that's gonna re, gonna require the drilling up of the floor, you know. Unfortunately, we, what we don't know is where this water all of a sudden is coming from. And they're, they're, they're trying to figure, still trying to figure that out. What's gonna make this kind of costly, of course, is not only you put it in there, but then you, you have to have a high-water alarms in there, which requires an additional deals that have to be put up, high up and so that inmates are walking through there, they can't damage it. I never thought I'd ever hear the day that three sump pump holes would cost forty-three thousand dollars, but that's the number we're looking at. And, and that, that, that's, what they're talking about is that would come out of the contractor contingency that still is there for the jail project. And with that, I think there would, still gonna be about twenty-five thousand dollars left, Steve, am I right in that?
Yep, that's right.
In the contractor contingency, there would still be about twenty-five grand left. And as you know, during, in that project, we didn't use any, in the LEC portion, we didn't use any of the owner contingency on those. So, so we're still in good shape on those projects. That's it.
I was just gonna mention, Kevin mentioned our, our space at, with Cass County. And I think we do owe them a big thank you. It's, you know, they've been a good partner in this detention project.
Yeah.
It's, it made all the difference, so we, we really need to thank them for that.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, I, I think we should have Steve send a letter on behalf of our board.
I was gonna say that, yeah, I agree, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we need a motion to do that, but if Steve could do that for us, that'd be great.
On Wednesday, I had the COVID-nineteen press conference and I phoned in on that one and that was all I had last week. Thank you. Okay. Last Tuesday, I had Highway Tracking, which Kevin has pretty well covered and we also covered it in our meeting. Also, what also we discussed was the turning lane in Glendon that, a project, I think, that was not quite done right. And I really would like to see us, I mean, we're working on it with the highway, the state highway department, on getting that turning lane in Glendon, the highway tenant, Park Ave, Park Avenue straightened out. So hopefully, we can get that moving along there because the, gotta put a turning lane in there for the buses and for the trucks to turn south on Park Avenue. Other than that, I had that meeting that Jenny talked about with our planning, planning supervisor, Matt, we discussed some project, upcoming project, which we'll be talking about in the planning commission tomorrow, tonight. That's it for me. Steve?
Aye, Mr. Chair. Highway Tracking, we've addressed by Commissioner Gross and Campbell, I attended that on Tuesday. Also, last Tuesday, I had motor vehicle discussion. Again, just keeping, keeping our citizens up to date, if you look at our website, we're trying to get any important information and changes. I think that from a customer service standpoint, we're continuing to, to, to work, even though our, our doors may be locked, our departments are extremely busy. Out in motor vehicle this, this last week, just to keep our citizens up to date, we're now doing dealer work. We're also doing drop-off, a drop-off box for tabs. And starting this week now, we're also doing DNR registration renewals and that also can be taken place in, in the drop box. It's very important for our citizens though to make sure that when they go to the website, they see all the additional information or the information that they're going to need to make sure that, that they get the, those tabs and those registration renewals done as quickly as, as possible. On Wednesday, I had a meeting with Kimberly Savageo. Governor Walz recently signed a, a new law relaxing the requirements for wedding licenses that both parties must be present in front of the recorder. And so starting this past week, the recorder is accepting mail-in requests for marriage licenses. So that is a, a service that we are now doing. Again, if you're getting married in, in December, the request is that, that you kind of keep those requests to as close as the date as possible and not to go too far. On that afternoon, we had multiple, we've had multiple meetings this past week with Kirk Rosenberg on the MOU with, with the city in regards to the, the tree burning, tree burner that we are looking to purchase with the city. And so we're working through a MOU document there. On the, that, on the sixteenth, we had a management meeting, keeping update of all of our managers on, on the operation changes here at the county. That afternoon, I had a meeting with, with, in regards to the coroner's office, with the Cass County officials, Sheriff Empteen, Chief Deputy Lansman, and Mr. Melton. Mr. Melton's gonna be working on a memorandum of understanding, just to clarify practices between Cass County and, and Clay County in regards to coroner services for, for criminal matters. On Friday, I had a meeting with, virtual meeting with Robert Wilson, Tina Fisk from West Fargo Administration, Chris Volkers. We kind of spoke about the different COVID-related issues that we're seeing within our organizations and we're going to plan to meet through this process each Friday to, to talk about shared interests. I had the owners' meeting yesterday, as has been mentioned by Commissioner Whalen and Commissioner Campbell. Just a few other things that they are going to be working on, once the ground thaws, we'll be working on over the next four to six weeks on landscaping the different areas. Also on Thursday, our trailer, that's been, been on campus for, what, three or four years now, is going to, going to be taken out. And so construction engineers will continue to have a presence here, but their, but their main trailer will be, will be, will be going. That afternoon, Commissioner Mojo and Commissioner Gross have mentioned, we met with Matt Jacobson on the issues with, for planning, planning zoning. And, and just to make note, we will be having a board of adjustments and planning commission meeting that, again, will be held virtually. For those of you that are interested, again, it's on the webpage and provide the directions to, to either participate both, either through the phone or both through the phone and through video. I would note that, that our district meeting for spring AMC meeting, that normally is held in Fergus Falls, is going to be held virtually this year. So June twelfth, from nine AM to eleven-thirty, is when we will be hosting or having that meeting. They'll be getting information out for, as far as links for us to participate in the future. But wanted to, to make note that it's going to be held virtually this year. I think, see, the last, the last thing that I had, late yesterday afternoon, I received an email from Kevin Kassenberg. He had been contacted by, by Darren Newell from the East Otter Tail Sound Water Conservation District, requesting interest in participating in the Otter Tail River Watershed, one, one watershed, one plan, meetings. He reached out to his, his board and his board made the decision that they would choose not to participate in that, in the one watershed. But, but Mr. Newell, Newell asked for me, for a county response. And so we, we, Clay County has just over two sections of land or point-two-two percent of all of our total land in Clay County. That's a part of their watershed. And so I guess we'd be looking for your, your feedback as a board on how you, if you'd like to move forward with that or like additional information from Kevin or with that on the yield.
I guess my thought was, we were only, excuse me, Jenny, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I, I can just speak to that. I think there's an opportunity for the Clay County SWCD to weigh in on that. I know that they, they emailed them at different times for comments. So I, I'm okay with their position to not take part in that. I know they do a lot, a lot of meetings. And I kind of would say the same thing for our board. I think it's important for us to have an opportunity to weigh in on that. You know, I would be happy to do that if, if that's what this board felt. But I, I do know that it's been important to have Otter Tail present at the Buffalo Red One Watershed One Plan. And so maybe it wouldn't hurt for us to just receive those emails and stay in the loop.
Well, I guess I'd have to agree that it was just a matter of staying in the loop, you know, but I don't know, we have to send someone down there for meetings and stuff like that because we got a very limited amount of land in that project down there. So I don't think we'd be necessary to have someone on that board for the one watershed, the one plan. So, sort of agree with that. They can keep us in the loop and I think Kevin Kassenberg will stay on, he'll probably be part of that, won't he, or is he?
Well, he, he'll probably receive information, but they've, from their standpoint, they've determined they, they're not choosing to be participant either.
Okay. Well, as long as they keep us in the loop, I think that'd be sufficient. That's my feeling, anyway.
All right, I'll let them know. And that concludes my report.
Okay, anything further, anybody? Not, we're adjourned.